We're gonna call a meeting to order. And we're gonna enter into exec to discuss the following items.
What time is it?
Oh, she said we don't.
He said, Kelly said no.
Okay, I thought so too. Proposed executive session, we're gonna do a procedural 2.1 negotiation matter CSEA. Discuss 2.2 negotiations matter BHA. Procedural, sorry, 2.3 contract matter individual employee. 2.4 contract matter individual employee. 2.5 legal matter district. 2.6 legal matter individual student. And 2.7 legal matter individual student. Can I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Okay, all those in favor? Thank you, we'll be back in a little bit. Good evening, and we're just gonna rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So at this time, we have any comments from the public? Hearing none, okay. And if I can get a motion, do we have one adoption for the agenda? Is it 5.1?
A revision.
A revision, yeah. Okay, so we're gonna have a motion to revise and adopt the agenda for 5.1.
Actually, we don't have any revisions, we're just adopting.
We're just adopting, okay. So we're just adopting the agenda for this evening's seminar. Thank you, all those in favor? Thank you. And we're going to look at the consent agenda for this evening. Can I have a motion to approve consent agenda? Item 7, 6, 7, and 8?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay.
Something special just happened.
So it happened.
We just, our board just appointed Michael McHale, elementary building technology coordinator to Coman Hill.
Welcome, welcome.
Welcome to our Byram family. You will always be known distinctly apart from your spouse, who works in the same place. And although we all care so much about her and think she's absolutely amazing, you will be amazing in your own right and not because of your affiliation with Lindsay. So we look forward to just developing that partnership with you in your school at Coman Hill. And I know that Andrew Taylor is beyond thrilled that you've joined Byram. So thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much.
Yes, we can let you exit. We don't make you stay for the whole meeting. We know how to do it.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you, welcome Monday. Tuesday, take Monday off.
We're giving you Monday off?
I'm giving you Monday.
Go out for dinner.
Take care, you guys, great to see you.
We do have Monday, of course they have Monday.
Bye, Michael.
Oh, that's exciting. That was very exciting.
You replace Mrs. Singh, right?
Yes, Rika Singh.
Oh, that's a fun school.
Should we take a moment to talk about today before we move on? We didn't do that, because I forgot to do that.
Oh, yeah, so today was our opening day for our teachers and administrators officially. We had fantastic speeches by our teacher recognition recipients today. Emily Sabatella and Stephanie Greenwald. They were just inspiring, and we are strong with 31 new teachers and 40 people, 41 people, all together in different seats. We have a lot of administrative changes that we're really proud of. Some succession planning on Byram Hills Park. Peggy McInerney moving back to Coman Hill as principal once again. Our assistant principal, Dave Mack, moving up to the principal position at Wampus. Our teacher, Lisa Palmer, moving up to the assistant principal position at Wampus. And at the high school, we have two new assistant principals, Lauren Albert and Ben August. And they are a great complement to Chris and everyone at that part. We also have Colleen O'Connor, our one and only. Used to be our high school principal. She, I'm sorry, assistant principal. She is now the assistant director of special services. So we have a lot of great people in all of the right places. And today was pretty spectacular. Tomorrow, we will hear from our other two teacher recognition recipients.
Do those speeches get taped?
No.
It was so good. They weren't taped this morning? It was so good.
This morning was spectacular.
It would be nice to have like a collection of them over time.
Well, they have a power voice.
Because they've been doing these speeches since I came in 1990.
And they're always so good. They're so memorable.
So today was just a fantastic day. And the first time ever, every single board member was there. I don't ever remember every board member. Everybody has jobs and works and has different things that are happening. And it has, I've never seen that in my time as superintendent. So that was really special. And tonight, we did a walk through, the board's walk through of the buildings. They are absolutely beautiful. I want to thank our custodial staff. Steve Thompson and his crew. They just, the new flooring, the carpeting, the ceiling tiles, the good lighting, so that our kids are studying and learning under appropriate lighting. Everything is amazing. The Byram Hills Education Foundation grants in the form of Insta-grants and that whole courtyard of really great outdoor games for kids to play. They have ping pong tables and foosball tables and everything else, just to complement everything else the BHGF has done at Crittenden already with the outdoor basketball court, the multi-use court. The buildings just look absolutely fantastic. The PTSA awning that now has benches under it and can be utilized. And then the grand finale was the Byram Hills Education Foundation grant for the Coman Hill patio. We went to the patio, stood on the patio and just looked around in awe. It is an amazing outdoor learning space for our kids. We have picnic tables and umbrellas that are coming or have come and need to be assembled. And thanks to the BHGF, thanks to the PTSA, and thanks to the staff that we have working here, we have one beautiful school district. It was an unbelievable trip today.
Absolutely, a very special day. It was wonderful to be inside with everybody together and see all the new faces and some familiar faces. And then, of course, going to see all the different schools this evening on our bus tour and seeing how everything, all the hard work that's been done over the summer in terms of capital improvements and getting the classes and the buildings up, you know, to code and looking fantastic and shiny and all the new improvements that we have. And then all the hard work that's been done over the summer in terms of professional development with the teachers and administrators. So we are very, very blessed and excited for the year. Okay, so I guess we're moving on to unfinished business. So I guess this is the approval of the Byram Hills School District Safety Wide, District Wide Safety and Emergency Response Plan? Do we, just, we're approving it? Do we need?
If you have any questions, I'm happy to go over it, but if anyone still has any questions.
This is the one that has to have a 30-day comment period. So we're at the end of that 30 days.
Okay, so I guess we're gonna ask for a motion to approve the Byram Hills.
Actually, I had a question. I was scanning this earlier. So I noticed SRO Don Aronberg is still on here.
On the MOU?
On the memorandum of understanding.
No, it's the final, it's the final. Page 5, the final.
Couch. Great couch, thank you, Patrick. We'll switch that out for Steve Patel.
So can we move to approve it with the suggested change? Yeah, okay. So can we have a motion? I'll move in a second, and all those in favor? Great, thank you so much. And that brings us to new business. And the assessment report, I guess that's Tim. Thank you.
I'm gonna come up here and present, so it can also be on camera for TV. Let me just set up. Okay, so we're gonna talk about some assessment data today, although I must say to you and the public that at this point, the test results are embargoed, which means that they haven't been publicly released and we're not allowed to discuss the specific results publicly. They were released on August 15th. We're allowed to use the data for internal use so we can start planning support services for our students and for us and for planning purposes. Do you know why they do that? I think there's, I don't know why there's such a long delay. I still think they are analyzing the data and coming up with some metrics and putting together the state ed presentation for the Board of Regents, which is this huge report that they do in analyzing the data. So I think they need time to put their stuff together before they share it with the public and are ready to start answering questions from the public. So at this point, they released them in August. We have the data internally. We have item analysis, so we know how our students perform, that they're being used in the buildings at Wampus and Crittenden to determine academic intervention services. I have one report in there, I'll show you how we use for curriculum analysis. And I work with the principals and department chairs to look at those, that information, and I'll walk through that a little bit. So at this point, on the first report I want to go over, which is, it's in your packet, it's the summary. Let me see what the exact name is. It's the summary results, New York State testing. So if you ask a question, just don't say any of the results out loud. We can just talk in general. I'm hoping in September, at the board meeting, I can do a full analysis and show the results. And I'll go a little deeper like I usually do in September. If the embargo is lifted at that point, then we can do bigger analysis. But I wanted you to have the data so you could see this. And I'll just walk through it a bit, as you see on, I believe it's slide 2, in your presentation where I say the percent of students performing at each, at each performance level. So it shows the levels 1 through 4. We're looking for proficiency, which is levels 3 and 4. I have to say that we were expecting our results to be fairly low. To remind you and the public, we're coming off of a pandemic where it wasn't normal instruction the last two years. Two years ago, we were hybrid at the secondary level. We were six feet apart at the elementary level. We modified our curriculum. We didn't have a real test in 2021. So 2022 is really our first state assessment. I'll remind you, so at the end of 2020, at the beginning of the pandemic, the test, the state tests were canceled. And then after 2021, the state had applied for a waiver from the federal government but did not get it. So they rushed together a test, they shortened it, they used released items. So that data in 2021, I think, is fairly useless. So now we're in 2022. We expected our results to be fairly low. I was actually surprised, and all of us thought these were pretty decent. And I'll show you some comparison data in a moment. So when I'm looking at this data, I see just the ELA for 4th and 5th maybe being lower than the rest, everything else being fairly where I might expect it. But when we go back and look on the next slide, I'll show you in a moment, it's not that far off of where we might want to be. I also want to just point out the 8th grade results for mathematics. That number seems a bit low, but remember, we're only testing students in Math 8. We're not testing students who are in Algebra 1. If I were to take the Algebra 1 students and see what, how many reach proficiency on Algebra 1 in 8th grade, which is 100%, you factor that in, it raises it by five points. So we're at 83% proficiency on 8th grade if you add in the students who reach proficiency in algebra. So that's just the number there, I'd like to just point out, because it seems unusual. If you go to the next slide, then you see that I highlighted 2021. I don't think that's a real year to compare. But what I did is I looked at from year to year in each grade, from 2019 to 2022, looking at the results. And you see overall, most of the results are increasing from 2019 to 2022. You do see, if you look at 4th and 5th grade, even 5th grade, even though it seemed low, it was up a percentage point from 2019. 4th grade down a little bit. So those are things to look at overall, if we look for trends and patterns. However, you do see an increase from 2019 to 22 on most of the data. And again, I can't talk specifics or dive deeper into grade level analysis, but we'll do that at the next report like I normally would. I think the most important thing that I always like to look at is cohort data. Follow the same group of students from year to year. That, to me, is interesting. The previous slide is good for curriculum analysis, to see if there's gaps. This one really helps us see how those students are performing and where we might be able to see if our interventions are working and if we're getting students to, more students to reach proficiency. Ultimately, what we want to do for the 3 through 8 tests, the original design of these tests back in 2005, when the state tests were created, was to make sure we're catching kids who are falling below standards, to catch them up by the time they get to high school. That's ultimately the goal. I don't think year to year, we should be so worried by sometimes having low scores. What we need to look at is are students growing each year and catching up? So by the time they get to high school, they're ready, they have a strong foundation, and they're ready for the challenge of high school. So when you look at this and you look, for example, under ELA and you see the comparison from 3rd grade to 6th grade, it's 3rd grade students in 2019, and those same students now tested this last spring in 6th grade. And you can see that big increase in their growth over time, showing, I can say this number, a 13% increase from grade 3 to grade 6. That's what we want to see, is students progressing, less, more students reaching proficiency, and that our interventions to catch students up are working. And as you can see, that going down to that last line on ELA from 3rd grade in 2017 to 8th grade in 2022, a 21% increase. That's what we want to see. It says we're catching students up, and more students are reaching proficiency by the time they get ready for high school. Again, if I jump over to the math slide and we look at the bottom line, I would factor in 8th grade, I would throw in those algebra students again, so that would add five more percentage points to that. So you would see a plus 15% increase from grade 3 to grade 8. So to me, that data is sort of interesting to look at the cohorts.
Why don't we attribute such a big jump like that by the time they were, you know, is it something that's happening in middle school? Is it just that last year? What gets them, what is that big jump from?
So our trend is generally to see students going up each year. That's what we would want. I think, you know, if you think about 3rd grade, some of these kids are still really young. And are they ready to take state tests? And take, you know, sit for two days for a long period of time and take a test? For some students in elementary school, that's just challenging to do overall, to concentrate for that long a period of time. And maybe some students just grow a little bit slower developmentally. You know, we have to really look at how students are progressing, that they're always seeing an increase from year to year and that they're reaching more of the grade level standards from one year to the next. That's our group. So I think kids developmentally are at different places. And then maybe there were some gaps in knowledge, and we, over time, catch them up.
I think also like our pedagogy, our practices are so much different than this sort of roadwork that's happening on these tests, right? So when you're talking about, by the time the kids are getting to the middle school and they're working on rich tasks, they're starting to apply knowledge in a way. So by that point, they've pretty much achieved what we needed them to do by 8th grade. But we're just, we're not instructing them to take tests.
And that begs the question too, is what is our focus at Wampus? Is it just testing? Is it just content knowledge? We also know we focus a lot on the social and emotional development of students, which we know is also really important, that you're not going to achieve at your best academically unless you're taking care of socially and emotionally. So there's a real balance. And I think just developmentally, more kids may take more time. And so, you know, it is that balance. Ultimately, when they get to middle school and even get into 7th and 8th, I think the academics start taking precedent a little bit as they get into the upper grades. Even though we still focus, and if you talk to Kim and Angelo, they're gonna say we do focus on the whole child. You know, their goal was always around balancing healthy mindsets with rigor. And I think the middle school does a really nice job at that.
So Tim, the 13% increase that you talked about, is that, is that standard? Like, is that what, the increase we've seen before? Is the increase we've seen before higher, lower? Or is that sort of the norm? I'm just wondering, because, I mean, we know that there was sort of like a developmental delay with COVID.
Yeah, I think when I'm looking at just that 6th grade result, that's pretty typical of where we would expect 6th grades in ELA to be there. It's just gonna depend where different cohorts might start in 3rd grade. Some are higher than others. But I think around that score, which I can't say right now publicly, that's a score that I think is pretty good for 6th grade. That's where we would want those students. Do you know from the state yet whether, if you look at this test versus the 2018 or 19 test, are they doing cut scores differently? So in essence, like you get the same distribution, but maybe overall, either the content was easier or they were more relaxed in terms of the number of items you get wrong? Or are they truly staying like apples to apples? They're pretty stand, forget last year or the year before, 2020, forget that test, but going back pre-pandemic. I think since 2016 was the last time they changed the test, so in 17, 18, 19 to now, it's pretty consistent in that range in terms of how they're doing the cut scores. That has been pretty, but it was post-2016 they had changed the test again. That's when they rescaled. So several times, when I show my old presentation, you see lots of asterisks. I try to always keep track of when there were changes so that we just know how to interpret the data differently. And that was one of those points as well in 2016. So since then, it's been pretty consistent. And is there any preliminary answer to whether or not iReady in the state data, do they paint the same picture or do they paint different pictures? I'm gonna go to iReady slides in just a moment. And so they're in the ballpark in some grade. I'll talk about it in a moment. I'm not doing a fall analysis yet, but I'm gonna do that in my next report. But I have some iReady data to show you. And you'll find, if you look, it's not totally correlated yet, and iReady will tell you it's not 100% matched to the state, to New York State standards, because they are across different states. So, but when I look at the numbers, and I'll show you the coding in just a moment and point out what I'm talking about. When the state comes out with their report, it'll be interesting to see if just, there are fewer people that score 3s and 4s across the state. There should be, because, and I don't know if I'm right about this, I thought somebody told me that the NAEP scores in New York State had gone down. And it went down like more precipitously than like Florida because of the, especially in the city, like there were so many days lost in school. So it'll be interesting to see. Right, so that's another thing, is normally I do some comparison data, and I look at where we ranked in Westchester or New York State, and I give that summary comparison as well. I can't do that right now because the scores haven't been released. So I don't know how other districts have scored unless I call my friends and ask them to tell me. So right now, we'll get that hopefully by the time I give my next report in mid-September.
One more question. When you say that they changed the test in 2016, are you saying that if they haven't changed it since 2016, that they're giving the exact same questions in the same order?
No, no. In terms of how they do the cut scores, which means all the students take the test and then they have to scale it, so they convert it to a common score. It's that process then, of where they draw the lines between a 1 and a 2 and a 3 and a 4, that process changed. And the test design also changed. So they changed the number of items. If you'll remember, the state, we used to give the state test over three days, and there was a lot of concern about overtesting students. So in response to that, the state reduced the number of items on the test. They made the test on time, and they changed the number of days. So those were some major changes that they made to the assessment. So that's why they had to rescale it, because it was a different test design. So you can't compare those, 2015 to 2016 test, you can't compare because the design was different. So the design is the same, the items don't stay the same. That's a good question. One more slide here, then I'll go to iReady data, which is the science scores. 4th grade, 99% reaching proficiency. It's fairly, we're always 98, 99%. Again, in 8th grade, that number of 82% is only the students in Science 8. It's not including students who are in Earth Science, because we don't double test the students. If you were to add the Earth Science students in, we had 100% of students reached proficiency in Earth Science. You add those students in, and that brings us up to 93% proficiency. So that number's more in line with where we typically are. So it looks low here, just because those are science kids who are taken out of the pool.
Right, thank you.
Okay, let me go on if you want to open up the next slide in your packet, which is the iReady diagnostic. I think that's what it's titled. Assessment Report, iReady End of Year. Oh, this I can present. So let me figure out how to do it. Get my slides on. There we go. On this data, so on this first slide, what I'm going to do is compare, this is a timeline of our implementation, which is in a, and I'm gonna compare the September, the fall implementation to the June, the third one, which I got in the spring. So we're gonna look at the fall to the spring assessment. We also do a middle diagnostic assessment. So let me explain what the diagnostic assessment is. We assess our students three times a year in K through 8th grade in reading and in mathematics. And what that data does, it gives us some benchmark data that then teachers use to see where students are maybe falling behind on the curriculum and not meeting the grade level standards. They check that against other data. They look at their other reading assessment data. They look at their local assessments that they give to make a determination, because we never want to put all our eggs in one basket and just say this is the end-all to be-all. So they look at multiple measures, and sometimes it matches, and sometimes there might be some discrepancies. So first, we'll look at reading results. Overall, this is the Coman Hill data. First, let me explain the color coding, and then it'll be an easier conversation. So the dark green is mid to above grade level standards. So that's where you want kids to be, is at the dark green. The light green is not so bad either, that's early grade level. So that's before, sort of somewhere in the first semester of work. So the two greens is where we ultimately want them, dark green is the best. Yellow, light red, and dark red are one or more grade levels behind. So we certainly want to get, see a decrease from the fall to the spring in the red bars. We want to see an increase in the green bars. That means kids are growing. So on this particular slide, all of Coman Hill students, for example, 19%, the dark green, on that first assessment, which we give in about mid-September to mid-October, somewhere in that range, were reading at mid to above grade level at that time. That's not like at the end of the year, but that's where we want kids to be at that time of the year. By the end of the year, 71% are reading at mid to above. That's incredible growth in kindergarten. It's what we would typically want to see. But certainly more growth in the national comparison. My next data report, I'll show national comparisons as well to show you where that is. I just got that report from iReady this week, so I'll share that in my next assessment report. This is our own kids comparison to comparison. So that's overall. If you go to the next slide, you can see kindergarten, 1st grade, and 2nd grade teased out. So it sort of starts to tell us a little bit of the story. You see that really big growth in just kindergarten growth from 11 to 76 in the dark green. In grade 1, you see from 17 to 70, you can add in the light green as well. You see most of our students reading at early to above grade level in grade 1. In grade 2, you also see pretty much increase. It's a little bit less of an increase each year. And what I've noticed in grade 2 is a reduction in the red bars at the top. That means interventions are working. Teachers are providing interventions and getting those kids caught up a little more than just a grade level catching up, which is good. So when kids are falling behind, it's hard to catch a kid up in one year. It usually takes multiple years. But as long as we see more than a year's worth of growth in one year, that's what we're looking for. Again, if we think long-term, our goal is, over time, to get kids caught up. In reading, it is really important from kindergarten to 2nd grade. Those are critical years. The next slide, you can look at Wampus, that's all Wampus students. I'll just scan to the next where we can see 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade. Interesting story here, Scott, if you're thinking about the state test scores and you think about the score, which we can't say out loud, but that 5th grade score wasn't as high as we would want it to be normally. It was a little bit lower than the other grade levels. The iReady data seeming to show that as well. So exactly percentage-wise, I'm not sure. It's somewhat, if you were to average out the dark green and the light green, and you could probably come up with some formula that would correlate somewhat in the ballpark of the state test score there. But it's certainly as a pattern, you're seeing similarities here. 3rd grade was our highest grade, then 4th, and then 5th. And you see that in the iReady data here, which to me was one of the things I want to look at. Because we're still trying to make that analysis, whether this particular diagnostic, we're only entering our third year doing it, is worth spending the time on. And we're still figuring that out, and we think it's helping. But we'll, you know, it will give us enough data ongoing. And we've talked here at this board meeting, And we've talked here at this board meeting, the frustration with the state test is it's just a summative test at the end of the year. What are those little benchmarks we can do along the year so we can catch kids up and not wait till the end of the year and say, oh, you didn't reach the standards. Now we'll catch you up next year. Right? So this is actually, we want to do more iteration. This allows us to do that.
And the iReady data is all by our health.
Yep, it's just a local assessment.
So we're not, the state test is comparing our kids to the whole of New York State.
Right.
So this is almost more meaningful because they're being truly compared to their peers.
Yeah, and we can look at the state test data with internally and compare it regionally. iReady is, you know, looking at our students, I have national data, so I can compare nationally. I'm actually trying to get iReady to do regional comparisons.
Do they do comparisons with like specific types of schools?
No, that's what I'm, I'm trying to.
That would be a game changer too.
Yeah. Yeah. So in a recent conversation with the rep, they said, you know, you really need to write to this person. And I'm trying to get other people, there's about 10 districts in our region who use iReady. So I'm calling out to my friends saying, do you mind writing this to iReady so that we can get regional norms? Because that would help us even more.
Now, the improvement in the Wampus numbers is significant, but it looked like the Coman Hill numbers, like the green bars, which is the middle to above grade, it changed more dramatically from fall to spring? Is it because of the earlier grades, you would expect that, or is it just because of something going on and going out?
Yeah. I think it's probably a combination. I definitely think when we look at the national comparison, you'll see that leap. But whenever I meet, when I meet with iReady to go over the data, they're always amazed at our growth. They're like, you're way above the national always. And sometimes they point out some interesting trends because they're looking at a lot of different schools and they see that. But usually in the early elementary, there's a lot of growth in reading, a lot developmentally. Students serve, some students are learning to read for the first time and you see tremendous growth. You know, so you're expecting to see that. I think when we get into the upper elementary, it does get more challenging. Texts get more challenging. There's more content coming in. There's more content in other subjects. Things do become harder as kids get through school.
Tim, sorry. How many diagnostics are there per year?
Three.
There are three?
We give a fall, a winter and an end of year. I'm just not putting in the winter. I think it's just too much data. I certainly wouldn't put that in, but.
And are they the, are they the same type of, same amount of time, same?
Right. Yep, it's about the same time on each assessment. Kids take different lengths of time and you can take it over multiple days. So we don't just have kids sit for an hour. We usually give it in 15, 20 minute blocks, but it depends on grade levels, maybe even less for kindergarten kids. And it's also, if you recall, iReady is an adaptive assessment. That means if I'm taking the test and I'm getting a lot wrong, it's going to lower the difficulty level until it finds where I'm at and then it'll start building up. It's trying to find where I am. If Dr. Lamia's taking it and she's getting them all right, it's going to keep giving her harder and harder problems.
Yeah.
And so what's up? There she is.
Do any iReady scores go out to families?
Right now, we have it. So we have two years of this. We do get reports and there have been families who have asked about it. And the principals will meet with the families and go over the report and explain the results. I've actually had conversations with families during the pandemic because we started doing it during the pandemic. I was actually having conversations with families to talk about the results and what they mean and interpret them for them.
Yeah.
That's not, that's not the norm. They would have to request that.
Yes, we just, we decide every year. I just had the conversation this morning with Peggy and David about it because we generally send out a letter to families saying we're going to be doing this iReady administration. And we just have to think about whether we make sure we understand the data first. You know, the first two years of implementation of this, we weren't so sure how confident we were in this assessment in general and understanding what it was testing. So we just need to like understand it a little bit more.
What are the number, I'm just curious, you might not even have this information, but the number of kids that are actually taking the iReady test versus the number of kids that are taking the state tests? So I'm just thinking, are there more kids taking iReady because they're in 15-minute increments versus people who are opting out because their kid can't sit for a three-hour test?
So iReady is given during the school day, so we make all of our kids take it. So every kid takes it. And if a kid rushes through it, we can tell if it seems like they're rushing the program, flags that and we could retest them. It's very rare that a student ends up not finishing a test. On the state tests, our opt-out numbers have decreased dramatically in Wampus in sixth grade. Seventh and eighth may be a little bit higher, eighth grade being the highest, but they're still significantly, significantly lower than they were originally. Yeah. So, yeah, it's most students in third, fourth and fifth have taken the state test. Critin, I'm not going to talk too much about Critin for this reason. We haven't really emphasized the test at Critin. We don't give them mid-year. We only do the beginning and the end. And if you go to the slide with grades six, seven and eight, you just saw their scores and they don't really correlate in the iReady scores at all. When I was meeting with iReady, they were like really concerned about the middle school and I said, I'm not. And this is before I had the state test scores and I was like a little bit nervous. I'm like, hmm, I wonder if we didn't do well in the middle school. We got the state test, we're like, those numbers are pretty high and they don't match iReady. The teachers don't really, and I was, I was thinking about this and talking with Kim about it. I think we have content specialists at this secondary level. The teachers work on teams and we have a lot of, we have a lot of consistency at the middle school. Those teachers really know the students and have their own interventions and have a lot of assessments they give students in the middle school constantly that I don't think they really need this. We might stop, we're going to give it one more year at the middle school. I don't think it's helping us help kids, this data. And when I look at these scores, they're not really telling us much because they don't correlate with the state test scores. We're going to dive a little deeper before we make that decision, but to see if, is there something going on here? I just want to look a little deeper at who those students are. So like the students who aren't achieving in the red bars, are they really not achieving or is this just because?
There's not as much emphasis on this being important and they're tested together.
Right. The teachers are like, the state test, they, you know, they really focus on that, this, they're like, okay, we'll just give it one day. And they don't really build it up like we do in the elementary building. The elementary students also, we use the learning pathway. So there's a whole nother part of this where once it gives the results in the, in the fall, the teachers can assign areas of work for students to work on independently in the areas where they were showing weakness in the standards. And so kids do practice and then teachers do other interventions. So we're really using this data at the elementary schools in the program. Where at the middle school, we're not. We just give it as an assessment. We haven't really bought into it as an intervention tool.
Could it be because the format is different in middle school? Is, or is the format very similar to what it is in the locals?
I think it's, I think it's similar. I really think the kids are just given to and say, take this program. And they're like, okay, what is it?
I wonder if, I think so too. I wonder if these numbers will look different in the next few years as the kids who were taking them in Wampus.
Maybe.
Well, that's what I'm saying about the format. That's what I was kind of saying.
Right? Once they get used to it. Because I mean, I have a kid in Wampus, they, he loves taking the iReads. Like they're fun. They, you know, they like to take them.
Well, the sixth grade is higher than, than eighth. So you might be on to something. And sixth grade math, when we get to the math slide, you'll see that a bit higher. I know the math teachers really like this. They, they just like the data. They think it's fun to play with. So they use it more than anyone at the middle school. I'll just go through the math results. So if we look at the iReady spring to fall, again, this is similar trends. You know how to read the graphs now. Seeing that growth in math, we'll look at the grade levels K through two. You see that big growth in kindergarten. You can just imagine how much these students learn in kindergarten and it's reflected above the ELA and the math results. The one thing here is that second grade math seems lower and that was sort of surprising to me. That's not typical of what I would see in second grade. So I'm, we'll unpack that a little bit and see why that green bar is a little bit lower than we would expect. And then you go on to Wampus. Again, seeing a big increase there when you look at three through five here. Again, you're seeing somewhat of a correlation between this data and the state test scores. If I look at that, you know, the fourth grade's higher here. They were similar, third, fourth and fifth were the same on the state test scores. So that's sort of surprising that fourth grade is a lot higher here. So that's something interesting. I don't know what's causing that. And then again, we get to the middle school where I won't spend time on it, except point out the sixth grade, you see the high green bar there and they use it a little bit more. The eighth grade, I'm not sure what that data means because it doesn't correlate at all with our eighth grade results, which you just looked at. So I think it's that seriousness of the assessment. Only just going to reference something else and I, again, I can't show the other two documents, but I just want to, I just want to explain them to you. There's two more documents in there, which are curriculum analysis reports. We are using that data to analyze our curriculum. I thought you would find it interesting. So if you opened up one of those spreadsheets and you looked at the data, you see one for ELA and one for math. And then if you go down it, it's by grade level. You'll see a bunch of highlighted items, the highlighted column. What that's showing is that lists the standards on the left. So you're seeing the standard for the assessment. And then you're seeing the number of, the number of questions and the percent of questions that are testing that particular standard and the domain. And then you see the actual item on the test. It might say MCO six, that's multiple choice six. And then I did an analysis where we look at what percentage of our students got that item correct and compare it to the region. So for example, if you're looking at the ELA one and you see that we tested 143 students and you see the certain percentage of students that got item, multiple choice item eight. Then you look at the region and that second column, that question gap is the difference. So if it's positive, what that's showing is our students, the percentage of students performed at the difference between our students and the region on that particular item, on every single item on the test. So what I did is I color coded the green ones that are more than 10% higher than the region. That's about where I would want to be, somewhere between 5 and 10% higher than the region. So the yellow is not in a, in no way a bad score. It's between 5 and 9% of the region. So that means our students scored within 5 to 9% if it's yellow. I didn't highlight it if it's from 0 to 5% or still above. And throughout every grade level on every test, you only see a couple, a handful, I think it's four or five items that are below the region on a particular item. So not in any ways. So this gives me some idea about how we're going to do comparatively to the assessments. If a lot of green items on a particular assessment means we're performing 10% of the region, we're probably going to be right fairly highly on that particular test. I'm trying to get an analysis of that, but it also, the green and the yellow are pretty good. If I see one that's within 5% of the region or lower, we're going to want to go look at that standard to see why maybe our students aren't achieving it. Was it maybe that we didn't test them very well on that? Was it maybe that we introduced that concept after the state test? You know, there's a lot of explanation, so we have to dig deep. But this is an example of a tool I wanted to share with you that we use to analyze our curriculum. So this is a really helpful, it's really interesting if you're sort of a curriculum nerd and you like to dive into the data and the exact standard that our students aren't achieving on. What our reading and math specialists have also is a version of this for each student. So we have every student and what items they got right. You can do a comparison there. So it tells us at the individual level, we put in the teacher's hands, data where they can actually look at their students and their success rate on every single item. So we can use it in general for the curriculum, then we can also dig down to the student level with the teacher. So it's really, really rich data that, you know, I wish the state would give us this a little bit earlier than August 15. If we could get it in July, it would be great. If we got it in June, it would be really awesome that we could actually end the year with it so teachers could take it with them over the summer. We could do some real curriculum work in the summer instead of fitting it in during grade level meetings during the year.
I just ask a quick question. I'm sorry. I'm just curious about, it looks like for some of the items, and I am a sort of a curriculum nerd too. Very interested in this.
You'll have fun with this.
So just a question, something like that first item.
On the ELA?
On the ELA. There, it looks like there are four questions for the same sort of skill, right?
Yep.
So when you see discrepancies in the regional success rate, what, to you, does that reflect? Is that something in the testing or is that?
Within one item. So you see three that were higher.
Exactly. That are so, that are so different, the percentages.
Right. So really digging into that, you see, so the, one that says MC is multiple choice. So there's two multiple choice. The other two are open-ended questions, right? Free response. So there might be a difference there, just in a kid's ability to take a multiple choice versus that. Also, when you look at the gap, you're talking a range from 8% to 14%. That eight to nine is still pretty high. We're still above the regional success rate pretty significantly. I think eight or 9% is pretty good. It's not like it's zero or two or three, right? So they're all pretty close together. So I just color coded them that way. If I change the colors, I can look at 5%, then it would be all, you know, above 5%. So, you know, you still compare to the region, we're doing well on that particular standard. So on most of those standards, I'm okay. You know, there might be one where it is, there's more where the whole standard is lower. That's one we really want to dig into as well. But you also have to have the test in your hands and go look at the individual item. Because you could probably, I can put that data in a teacher's hand and if they look at the item, they'll probably tell you right away what the kids got wrong. They go, oh yeah, I think I know what they did here. That's the real power is taking the test, looking at the item, looking at this data and then saying, what do you think our kids aren't getting here? And then what can we change in our curriculum so that kids can get that data?
Are you finding that the teachers are really using this data already or not yet?
They do, in fact, today. When I was asking Lindsay about her day today, part of her day ended. So we had the morning meetings, then she went to faculty meetings and then she had a, what's called a speed data meeting, called speed data. So the teachers at the grade level get data folders with their kids' data. And that looks, it's a little different than this, but it's.
From last year? Their data from last year?
From their kids from last year. Yep. And also they got this year's kids, so they know what they're coming in with.
Right. That's what I mean. The kid, but the kid that they're getting, this year's teachers are getting the testing that year.
Exactly.
Kids did last year.
So they sit around, they look at the data and they have conversations about it. So they, we actually teach them to look at this and get, get that data in their hands now.
It's really interesting because it's giving them a level of like analysis on each kid that normally you wouldn't get unless that kid was being evaluated for something.
Right.
You know, like they're getting this on every kid, which is great.
Each kid and each topic also. It's, it's broken down so, so well by topic.
Yeah. So that's where, Scott, I know we've talked a lot at the board meeting before about getting data in the hands of teachers earlier. So if we could get this data.
If the iReady tests are at good or better quality or the same quality as the state test, they're 50 times more useful because this is just so much more granular and quicker and, yeah.
Yeah. There are conversations happening at the state level about doing adaptive tests again. That conversation happened about, I think it was in 2016 when they were changing. They can go that route. You know, so any advocacy we can do with that regard, let's change the format of tests. Let's have more, these tests exist. I don't know why we're using such an archaic system in our state testing because there's companies that can do this stuff.
Right.
New York just needs to hire a company and come in and do it instead of them trying New York just needs to hire a company and come in and do it, instead of them trying to use, you know, these tests that, really based on a model 30 years ago, I think, not the elementary, the regions have been around that long. These have been around since 2005, that's the 3 through 8 test. So we need to change that, because imagine having this in June where we can end the year, and then do curriculum work in the summer, where teachers can analyze it, it would be much richer. But they do use it, yes, Mia, to answer your question. It's in their hands, they use it, and they use the iReady data as well. Any questions, Lara? Thanks for the time.
Oh, my gosh.
Thank you.
I'll have more hopefully in September.
This is great.
Thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
That was really great. Okay, we're going to move on to 10.2, Board of Education in 2022, 23 Committee Assignments. If everybody had an opportunity to look at the committee assignments that they were sent around, the only thing we have to do is, we will have to add a literacy committee on here, because it's not here, so we'll revise that. Okay, great.
And you will hear more about the literacy committee in my staff. I'll talk about that in a moment.
Does anybody have any questions about the committees, any concerns, changes? Okay, so can I have a motion to approve committee assignments for this year?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you. And then the board goals review. Yes, thank you so much, Jen.
So we, Lara, Lori and I have looked at this already. I wanted to put this on this agenda for the board to start looking at, and we could have a detailed Q and A at our next meeting if there are specific questions that you don't have for today. We did stay with, you'll notice this is a lot more fleshed out as far as the components that are under each of the topics than we have had in the past, but we really felt that it was time that we added a few things here. So we have excellence in teaching and learning. What we did is distinguish for new curriculum implementation and innovation in teaching and learning, broke it down from K5, what is going to be K8, what is going to be 912, and what is going to be 612, because we thought that that would, and then also K12. And it's everything from guidelines for curriculum and instruction decisions, evaluating curriculum, science curriculum, world language curriculum, and going back to the elementary level with our literacy curriculum and reviewing, evaluating, reading, and mathematic diagnostic and screening tools. So it seems less general than we have had in some of our board goals for the past, but I think that these are really tangible items that we need to build to get to the excellence of teaching and learning. There's also the data, Scott, this was a nod to you, using data to inform practice, but really continuing to expand that data dashboard, revising the methods and tools. And a lot of what Tim was talking about today, looking at that iReady data versus some state data and why they don't parlay quite accurately, looking at multiple measures, trying to develop a data story of kids. Our social, emotional, and physical health and safety of students and staff, still a board goal priority with social, emotional learning, and those curriculums character strong, going into the 3, 4, 5 building, continuing our partnerships with some of these outside institutions and organizations that have helped us to plan what we have now. Our health protocols are smaller than ever. It doesn't mean that we are not still focusing on mitigation strategies like filters and, you know, cleanliness of our buildings, and having opportunities for tests in our schools for people to take home from the state. All of that is still going to exist, we just don't have all of that six feet apart and blue dots on here. So we are looking forward to that. Security, we have our adoption of our District Y emergency plan, thanks to Gina Cunningham and all her work with the Al Tarris Group, and the trainings that occur. And then cybersecurity, a contribution here from Andrew Taylor about continuing to look at the data breaches, all of the collaboration has to do with Lyric, with the outside vendors to look at our security measures. We just received something, I don't know if the board received it, about phishing, and we have to, you know, periodically take these tests now at work, a lot of changes in protocols regarding passwords, so they're doing a lot of work on that. And fiscal accountability and communications, we have our current year issues, I don't know what are issues, but reviewed strategies to reduce our operational costs and increase efficiencies, Kelly will talk a little bit more about that, planning and the development of some capital projects through the course of this year, district benchmarking, including the per pupil expenditures, and then we have two collective bargaining agreements. Long-term outlook, study the five-year district forecast, the impact of the tax cap, utilization of our reserves, plans for the capital project, strategize the mandate, convert the bus fleet to electric buses. I mean, really, you could have just had that one bullet, I think that probably would have been all you needed to focus on. Alternative energy sources, this is something we're pretty passionate about exploring, and monitoring all the pension, looking at field usage, identifying appropriate projects for turf installation. I did have the opportunity to meet with the town over the summer to talk about the use of fields and issues that we're having with overuse of fields, right? Like, we more traditionally will now shut our fields down in inclement weather, but we were having conversations about how we can best utilize each other's field space. We have to review the impact of increase in enrollment and building capacity. I was going to save this for my report, but we are at 200 kindergarten students.
Wow. I can't wait to do more.
New real estate development on staffing and budgets, those are the conversations that we have with the town that help us to predict what our needs are going to be, our future revenue trends and tax implications for us. In leadership development and succession planning, last year we only have this main topic, this one main box that we were continuing, you were continuing as Board of Education and we as a district, to look at succession planning. Now we've put two very specific items under leadership development. We're going to study and study these opportunities for selected administrators, including executive coaching to build their capacity, consultant work for conducting teacher evaluations. We are having Karen Eldon come in and work with some of our newer administrators to evaluate teachers, to give them a thorough support system for that. Also, tri-states leadership training experiences, we have quite a few teachers and administrators who are going to be trained in tri-states, conducting tri-states visits. I'm also going to be in charge of elementary principals, tri-states meetings for the course of this year, so I'm going to facilitate six of those this year, which I'm looking forward to. And leadership development opportunities selected for teachers. Tim and Gina put together a year three, remember, we had the year one mentor program, and then it was 2.0, and now it is voluntary, but there is a year three, and it's really to help these teachers with leadership opportunities and leadership development. And we're going to continue to look at partnerships with local universities. I am here partly because Byron Hills at one point had a partnership with Fordham University, and that is how Chris Walsh and I, and, you know, quite a few others, were here, and we're going to see if there's an opportunity to do that again, to keep that pipeline going. Education reform and advocacy, you'll see that we put three specific items under that as well, that were not there last year. Through West Putt, the Board of Education will identify advocacy areas of focus and share goals with the school community. Scott, I think that we tip our hat to you on that one. And administrators on the board that will continue to focus on the areas of state assessment and graduation requirements, as those requirements change, and study the effects of unfunded mandates, particularly related to electric vehicles.
And in general, unfunded mandates are something that we're starting to talk about a lot at the regional level, and trying to do some updated work on really laying out what they are, how dangerous they are, to really get an advocacy agenda to fight back against them. So I think it's great that it's on there.
And so I think if we don't, if, I'll take questions if you have any, but this, today was just to give you a preview and give you time to look at it before our next meeting. We'll have a more detailed discussion at the next meeting and see where the board wants to go.
Yep, thank you so much, Jen, this is very thorough. Lori, Mia, were you there as well when we looked at this?
Oh yeah.
Yeah, Mia was there as well. We were, you know, very pleased to see the additions to, especially these last two topics. And if everyone can just take a look at them until the next meeting and bring any questions or concerns or additions that you might have, and we can talk about them then. Thank you. Okay.
My report.
Yes?
My report. Well, I already started talking about enrollment with our 200 new faces coming to see us. What did I say, it's the 2036?
Right?
36.
Maybe 100. 2036.
It's only 12 years from now.
It's only 12 years. We have, and it is only 12 years. We have 200 new faces coming in to see us at Coleman Hill, we're so excited about. But if I look at the enrollment to at Coleman Hill right now, first grade is at 183 students, second grade's at 184. Then we have a little bit of a dip at Wampus with fourth grade and fifth grade, 159, 155. We have that very big class in 10th grade right now with 201 students, but our juniors and seniors are at 169 and 159. So we're really starting to see those higher numbers at the elementary as we have seen. So many new people to the district, quite a few families who were in the new teacher orientation with the principals, very fun to see. Welcome to all our new families. And we have a COVID update, which is the state is not mandating that we have remote instruction. They said if you have in-person instruction, the state no longer mandates remote instruction for COVID. We are going to still be providing students, of course, with the materials that they need via Google Classroom, and teachers will be very committed to that this year. We are also looking at, we have established already, a program with EdUcer. So if there is a student for this year who is unable to come to school at all because of a health-related condition related to COVID, we have an outside company that we can utilize so that child can have fully remote instruction outside of Byron Hills. We didn't have, last year, what did we have for EdUcer?
Oh, probably three students.
Three students?
Very small. Might have a few more early year, and we'll get back.
So we are committed to continuing to do that. As I said before, all of our, you know, there's so much you learn from COVID regarding cleaning and filters and cleaning up buses and, you know, people I think are just more conscious when you hear somebody cough. I mean, it's like, it's a different world for us right now, but I am happy to say that even though we will still keep ourselves as safe as possible, that we are not in this maniacal contact tracing. I don't know why Gina's still here, actually, but.
A lot of her time.
Those were, those were a lot of nights and weekends, a lot of COVID tracing. Gina knew all the kids, she was knowing where they sat on buses, I mean, it was like, it was a little crazy. So yes, Gina, I think you can officially hang your COVID cap.
COVID star. Amen, yes.
I went through our building operations and everything we did in our visits. I would like to talk a little bit about red flag law updates. I am the president of the CSA, the Council of School Administrators for Lower Westchester. We are having the executive district attorney come to speak to the superintendents in September about the red flag law. This is, you know, it has nothing to do with gun control, it has to do with access to guns in homes and kids having that access. So I know that they have been very vigilant in Nassau and Suffolk Counties in utilizing the red flag law to go into homes and make sure that guns are locked up and are not accessible to children, and Westchester is really.
That's it, if there's a.
If, if a kid reports it, like if a kid comes home and said, I was playing with my, you know, with a gun in my house, that's the situation. Right, that's what we wanted, and so the county is going to come and speak with all the superintendents about the steps that they've taken and what we should do if we ever hear of that, for keeping kids safe and keeping schools safe, and.
Who exactly does it, is it the county police, or is it somebody else? Is it local police?
It's all the local police. So the county trained all the SROs already, and they train local police in how to do it. And I think that's it, just the welcoming of new students and staff and our Board of Education to a new year. I'm looking forward to it. That's the end of my.
Thank you, thank you, Jen. Tim has literacy.
I'm going to talk about a few things. Let me just get my numbers up here.
I'd love to appoint someone to vote guidance on it.
Oh, where was that?
I think that's.
I think it's on the president's.
Sorry, one second.
I can't have anything.
Oh, on the president here? No, I have none of your superintendents. Oh, oh, oh. Oh, I didn't, that didn't come up to me before.
Sorry, Tim, one second. We'll just go back to.
No problem.
Oh, Ms. Butler. Scott just left, so why don't we, why don't we.
Is he, we can come back to it, but where is the, who's on the team for that? It's the, we're just, sorry, we're all just looking at something under Jen's.
Yeah, it's about the board appoint, if they want to appoint a delegate to represent Byron Hills to let Debbie know, and the item will be placed on the September 20th.
We miss Scott, though, he's on here.
He was Scott in the past, I just want to make sure he wants.
He's listed on our, he, he.
He picked it, right?
He did.
Everyone's seen that.
Yep, okay, so we're good, sorry I have that.
No, no, well, I.
Unless you, did you want to do it? Okay, to make sure Scott wanted to do it.
Okay, good, yes, sorry, Tim, go ahead.
Okay, am I going to start now?
Yes, sure, sorry.
So I'm going to talk about curriculum, so which is a good segue from the data to actually what we do with that data. So you've seen me report in the past on what is a curriculum review cycle. So we have this four-phase cycle when we're reviewing our curriculum in the district or adopting new curriculum. So in phase one, it's study and planning, that's where we're diving into looking at best practices, studying curriculum, studying, you know, getting ready for an implementation of something new. And phase two is the implementation phase. After studying, we go into implementation. Year three is when we evaluate and reflect, and that would be when we look at how well did the implementation go, do we want to make any changes, do we need more professional development? And then phase four, revising and refining and making adjustments to that. So I've shared this in the past, and so every year in the summer, I'm reflecting with the administrative team on what are the areas we really want to dive into and where are we on our major curricular initiatives? So you can't review everything all the time, and our administrators, particularly at the secondary level, or our directors, are a little more in there doing a lot more work. This is really where it requires my attention, and I come in and I'm working with the administrators on sort of a big level. So this is sort of what we're working on this year. I won't go through all the details, but to give you a sense of this, you can certainly look at it more deeply. But you'll see here, for example, you know, literacy, that'll be in a phase one in terms of studying literacy in general, and I'm going to talk more about that in a moment, so I'll come back to that. But another thing we're studying and planning for now is we have our special education teachers of the special class K5, who are all being trained in the Orton-Gillingham approach to literacy. So Kim Sapon, our K5 Assistant Director of Special ed, is overseeing that. So we put that together this summer, and she's planning that implementation this year. We're at phase two and doing our pilot of guided reading and read alouds. So that was something we were planning pre-pandemic, and we're picking up with that. We're evaluating foundations, there was some focus on phonics that came up in this past year, so we thought it's a good time to reflect on that, and we actually sent teachers to training this summer on foundations. All of our new teachers get trained on foundations. When they come in, we give them the training schedule, this is done by an outside agency through our local dosis, and we ask our new teachers to take that training for their grade level, it's grade level specific. So all of our new teachers receive training on foundations, and many of our current teachers retrained on it. We weren't implementing it in third grade, we had stopped doing that about seven or eight years ago, we're bringing that back, so our third grade students will engage with foundations as well. And we've talked about ways to differentiate that, because some students don't need that direct phonics instruction in third grade, so we're using elements from our Wonders program on the word study, so we can enhance that for students who need that in grade three. Because there are certain students who don't need that type of foundation, have already cracked the code of reading by the time they're in third grade. And fourth grade, we're reviewing our Wonders scope and sequence at each grade level, we were sort of in the pandemic scope and sequence, where we modified it. So all of the grade level teams met this summer and redeveloped that scope and sequence in literacy currently with our Wonders program, and we're also looking at MTSS. So that's an example of how we're at different phases with different programs, and we'll go through the details of all of them, but this gives you a sense of where we are. We're looking at science standards, we're looking at piloting character education, I'll have a curriculum conversation later this year around our Character Strong program, which is that we're in the second year of a pilot of Character Strong. Gina's been really involved in that program with Dave Mack and SEL team at Wampus. And we'll be looking at health education, we're expecting new standards from the state on health education, particularly refining some areas in health education that we need to update. There's sexuality education, that's specifically around puberty. We are looking at our puberty curriculum, which is now taught in fifth grade, and we've reviewing just the, just issues that arise with.
You know, more up to date.
More up to date, thank you.
Puberty.
So this comes up every year. My first year as a director of curriculum in 2008, I was asked to look at the puberty curriculum, it was one of my first tasks, so it's always funny, I have laughs over that.
You just never know.
And Aaron's Law, which is about child sexual abuse, and we have to teach, there's a law to teach that, we have to be age-appropriate at each grade level, it's very sensitive issues, particularly with young kids, so we're studying how we approach that. We started to do that pre-pandemic, we're coming back to that work. And then also looking at shifting our health curriculum from a content-focused curriculum to a skills-based curriculum, and that's sort of a trend, not just all about content, but about how kids engage with issues that arise and developing their skills. So for example, if you think at the secondary level, a common thing we're talking about, say, is substance abuse, that's a common issue that we deal with in teaching our health classes. So instead of just talking about the facts about substance abuse, you develop kids' skill, how do you deal with peer pressure? What if you're at a party and your kids, you know, your friends are pushing you to try alcohol, how do you deal with that? So you practice it from a skills approach. You'd also bring in content, but it's not content only, it's really the practical application of what you do in these situations.
Is that, is, your peer pressure today looks very different from the way it looked when we were in school. Like, when we were in school, it might have been something like you're at a party and kids are pressuring you. I feel like it doesn't look like that now, it's more like a social media and images and things like that. I guess, is that all of, is there, is it modernized, I guess is what I'm asking?
Right, that's a great question. So first, there still is that pressure at parties and things, that still exists, so that's still dealt with. But yeah, we're definitely dealing with social media, we're dealing with that whole impact and how you deal with that type of pressure, and just that obsession that, you know, children have around posting on social media, how many likes do I get seeing these images, what do you do with those images? That's all part of the skills-based thing is, how do you take in all this information and make sense of it in the world, and what do you do if you see something that's upsetting to you? Giving kids the tools and the skills to be able to be proactive in their lives, as opposed to just teaching this information and then backing off of it. It's really taking that skills-based approach, so.
Didn't something used to be taught in fourth grade, that, wasn't there?
With.
Wasn't that part of puberty, that was taught in fourth?
Was it fourth or fifth?
Yeah, I could.
It was fourth, it's, well, there's a little bit of both, dare was fifth, but puberty now has been in fifth, we've even thought of moving it to the middle school, but I think we're going to keep it in fifth grade. It wasn't fourth, I think you're right, when I first started looking at it in 2008. So there's issues there, if you think about, instead of just teaching kids the facts about puberty, really talking about, say, for example, it's really about change, and there's different types of change, there's social change, there's emotional change, and there's physical change. So we have that conversation with kids about change, instead of. So we have that conversation with kids about change, instead of just getting into the facts about what is actually changing and why and all that stuff. We still teach part of that, but it's really about the development of kids and how they interact and engage because of that. That's skills-based approach. Well, and we're consulting with, I think it's a contract that might be in your packet this month, is with the former Byram Hills Health educator and director of our Health and Physical Education Department, Mike Galina. He'll be working with us. He's been teaching at the college level and he's been doing a lot of consulting and he's really up to date on this information. And he's been a great resource. I had several conversations within the summer to talk to him about doing this work. Do you have a question, Larry?
No. It's nice to hear that he's helping--
Yeah, he knows our community, so he's really-- and he knows the teachers. He's been there with them. So right away, he's looked at curriculum maps. He's giving us feedback on that. So he's been doing some pre-work to get ready for this work. So I'm very excited to work with him. We'll be doing some work in science. You'll see that and have an opportunity to talk to the chairs and directors in October about their goals. You can see Startup is on here in our curriculum review. Global Scholars is on here.
It's gonna be a great year.
It's gonna be a great year with Startup. I guess I'll plug that now. On Thursday morning, we're bringing in parent volunteers, so we have a database of about 38 parents now. So I think a good number are coming on Thursday, and we're gonna also have a virtual option. We'll come into that. So Lisa Pellegrino and Jen Layden and Andrew Taylor, who will be administrators overseeing it, as well as John Naughton and Kelsey Smith will be teaching, as well as Lisa teaching, of course. They'll all be there and we'll start the process of training the volunteers, the parents. So we're very excited about Thursday morning and meeting the volunteers and creating a volunteer community. And I will do a plug to our community. If anyone is interested in volunteering and has expertise in the area of starting your own business or other types of specific areas around legal advice or other areas around what's involved in starting a business, you can volunteer for Startup and come in and work with our kids and teachers. So you can certainly email me and I'll give you the information.
Oh, just a quick question, Tim. How many children signed up for Startup, do we know?
The last number I recall, which was at the end of last year, was 67 students. We had to create three sections. We were hoping for one section. Just like Global Scholars, it was like, how many kids?
Juniors and seniors only, right?
Juniors and seniors. It starts in junior year. And we allowed seniors as well to take it, just so they have a year.
Sure.
And so again, it's sort of like Global Scholars. You could start at either 11th or 12th if you take one year of it. We think that's great. So it's not like science research where you have to commit to three years. But we will then start a second-year program next year--
That's great.
--to start it. We're very excited about starting this. Our teachers trained over the summer and went to a week-long workshop together with Lisa Pellegrino. And we have a lot to put together and a lot to figure out, but it'll be a good first year.
That's great.
Very excited for our kids.
After this year, will you be able to give us some data about if it pulled away from Global Scholars and science research and the other--
Sure. We can sort of look at that analysis. That's a good idea. And I can tell you now, it definitely pulled a little bit from Global Scholars, not anything that's killing the program by any means, but certainly some students who took one year of Global Scholars or maybe two years may be deciding to go into Startup. And that's not necessarily a bad thing. We see that as maybe a kid just starts to think about, you know, a social enterprise that they want to start putting together, go into Startup and start it instead of maybe just learning about it in Global Scholars. So we see that as a natural pathway and I think we're okay with that.
I think you mentioned there was an opportunity for the students who wanted to still do both Global Scholars and Startup. That's--
I believe that that can fit in their schedule. Absolutely. It might be that a kid might not be in other types of electives, so it's just that trade-off that kids have when you have, you know, eight courses you can take in a year. Finally, you'll see some of the new courses. Generally, we always review. Anytime we implement a new course, we're constantly evaluating those new courses. Because of the pandemic, I got a little behind on that, so you see a bunch of new courses here that are in the evaluate, reflect, revise, refine phase. And those are some of the courses we've approved since 2018, so that list is good. And a couple other things that I hope to start getting to and touching a little bit on this year, not full study yet, is really looking at our district-wide practices around homework and around grading. It's something that we've had little pockets of conversations about over the last 10 years. Grading is something I have a lot of thoughts on and I've worked with teachers in a lot of little pilots. Certainly, that's something I want to take on as a bigger level, and Mr. Walsh is gonna be talking about it this year with high school faculties on some level, not making any major changes, but is doing a little bit of thinking and reflecting about our grading practices. And we'll take it on more and more over the next several years. You'll hear me talk a lot about it before any major changes are made, but as we get teachers to start experimenting a little bit with different types of more current evidence-based grading types of practices and getting away a little bit from accumulation of points. That's sort of one idea, but there's a lot of different aspects in grading and homework to explore and study in our district. I'll just point out, I'm gonna click on this down at the bottom, specific K-5. I won't go into detail. This is an extensive document, but you'll see all of the different applications that we have at the elementary that we're constantly spending time reflecting on. It's a lot of material. You'll see all of that. You're familiar with Wonders. Wonder Works is the special education version of Wonders. You've heard me talk about foundations. There's other programs on here that are all related to literacy on that piece and we're at different phases of what we're doing, whether-- per grade level at Coman Hill and Memphis. And you'll also see math and some of the things we're looking at. So this is work that I developed with Peggy and Dave as we explore these different areas and are implementing a lot of different things. There's a lot of balls in the air in elementary when you're dealing with four academic subjects for a classroom teacher. So you see these different areas where we're focusing our curriculum work on. And then you get to the social motion learning and health education at the bottom. We're also doing some training out with teacher aides, and that's a collaboration with Gina, who works with the aides, and some of the staff developers that have been in our district for a while, working with teachers. We're bringing in to work with our classroom aides so they can better support our kids in the classroom that align with our practices. That's really exciting work. We're very happy about that aides training. We did this over the last two summers, actually, three summers with the pandemic, and it's been really great work for our teacher aides. And finally, let me get to the literacy study, which I've been waiting to talk about all summer. I've been working on this and meeting some great people and reading a lot of great articles. So there's been a lot of media attention on literacy over the last year. You know, in the media, it's sort of portrayed as the reading wars. Every decade or so, we go through the reading wars, the math wars, there's all types of education wars about the philosophy of how you teach these subjects. So we're sort of-- we're in the era of the reading wars right now. There's a lot in the press. It's in the mainstream press, it's in the educational journals. You probably are reading it in your school board journals about reading. And it's generally a philosophical approach about phonics versus whole language and then halfway or somewhere in between, the balanced literacy approach. And what we read in the media is often a very oversimplification of what is really needed to talk about. And sometimes the research and the science of reading that is set-- talked about in the media is not often deeply understood. So as this was coming up and we were having conversations last year around it, and I'm reading a lot in the press about the reading wars, I thought, how do we approach this in a way that doesn't confuse us in Byram Hills and we don't start being reactive, that we actually do it in the Byram Hills way, which is to slow down and to study deeply? You know, we did that when we changed our philosophy in math back in 2005. We just slowed down and spent two years studying it before we made any major decisions. So in conversations with Jen this summer, actually at the end of last year, we thought, how can we do that around sort of the questions that are coming up around literacy? I said, why don't we just dive deep into a study like we do? We've done this before. We've been doing it in our site-based teams around character education. We bring parents and teachers and administrators together to read the literature and do book reads. Chris Walsh has done studies like this around college admissions with parents and guidance counselors. We did it with rural languages back in 2009 and '10. We studied foreign language at the elementary school. We brought in an expert to guide us through a study for a couple of years. So I want to take that approach this year. And I've designed an approach to a literacy study where we will bring our elementary teachers together with the administration and with parents. And as I've been reading the literature, I came across some common names. So I started to make some phone calls and found two really amazing expert consultants who are researchers in literacy. They're both also former teachers and practitioners who've worked with kids. They understand reading and writing really deeply. Typically, as researchers, they have their own area of expertise. These two complement each other well. They have different areas of knowledge base. We will bring in other experts if we need to that they don't have expertise in. We'll find someone else that we can-- we can come in, that can join us. So I've designed this around having five evening meetings where we will study deeply. They'll give us research to review. We'll come in and have discussions about it, and we'll talk about what is our-- what are the implications for classroom practice as a result and how can parents support their children at home? So these two experts worked with me over the summer to design these five sessions. In addition to those five sessions that will be for the committee, we will do five additional public open forums where we can bring in more conversation with the greater community. So it's not just limited to the committee members. We want to try to keep that somewhat contained so we can have discussion with each other. But we'll do principals' coffees, we'll do a board presentation, we'll bring our expert consultants here to talk to you and committee members so we can talk about what we're learning. And we'll find some other evening forums where we can share the learning, the research that we're reading, the learning that we're having, and involve our community with that as well. It's a starting point. We'll see where we get after these five sessions at the end of the year and if we need to continue it, if we need to add some sessions, we can certainly adjust this along the way. I thought this would be a great way to sort of try to just slow down our system and dive deep and learn before we make any major decisions. So this won't be a decision-making body. This isn't to adopt a curriculum. This is to study how kids learn to read and how they learn to write. And from that, we'll gain some knowledge that will then help us make decisions about our curriculum and instructional practices going forward. And to me, that's sort of what we've done in the past with other sort of complex topics. And when we study something deeply, we end up making really good decisions in the future because we're basing it on a common knowledge base. So with that, there are also-- we're having two board members be part of this as well. We think it's an important committee to elevate it to board level, parents, teachers, administrators, and really dive deep. We'll make decisions as a committee if we want to continue our work together.
Lara and Melissa are in the other room.
Awesome. Thank you. Thanks for your time and commitment.
We're really excited about it. It's, you know, very relevant and, you know, we appreciate all the work you did this summer on it and, you know, very excited to do this deep dive and, you know, get some answers and get some new ideas and see if they need to be implemented.
Thank you. I will be sending out an email to the community the next week, the first week we're back, maybe midweek next week, to both teachers and to the parent community. I'll ask parents if they can really commit to those days to submit and fill out a form, and then I'm sure I'll have to select some. We'll just find a balance of parents across the grade levels to be part of the committee. So in terms of administrators, it'll be Dave, Peggy. We ask Kim Sapone, who's special education. Peggy Mackinardi, Dave Mack, and the principals. Kim Sapone and Duane Smith is English chair. I thought it was important to have that 612 perspective as well--
Right.
--because he can help us frame it where kids go. I think it would be good learning for him as well in that transition to the middle schools. I'll be a part of that committee, and then we'll bring in our wonderful teachers and parents.
So that's a very thoughtful approach.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm very excited about it. I think it's gonna be awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for joining. I can't wait.
We're excited.
Yeah. The Rato Forum for-- oh, you don't have to fill out it.
No.
You have the dates. Just make sure you have the dates on your calendar.
Thank you, Tim.
It's on that form.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving on. Do we have anything from--
Just a couple--
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to touch base with you guys on the town of North Castle. You might have seen the notification regarding their water supply. They got similar to us, received a PFAS notification from the Department of Health. I spoke to the director--
I think it was the beginning of the--
Yeah, it was-- it was July 20-something, actually, I'm trying to think. I spoke to the director of water, so we're today. He's in a similar position as we are. They've submitted plans in March, and they're still waiting approval for the Department of Health to remedy the issue. Similar to us at the high school, we're replacing our water treatment system and we've submitted plans around the same time, actually, a little early, in February, and we're still waiting for that approval as well. So just wanted to touch base on that. The water is safe to drink. It's not a concern in terms of drinking, but it's just a new regulation that we have to abide by. We're just waiting to get that done. We'll get that done in the high school and go, and the town's gonna make that adjustment as well. Just in terms of a timeline for a capital project at the high school, the new learning commons, or the library replacement. We've been-- toured some libraries, Jen and the high school staff has gone to multiple libraries. Early September, the next couple of weeks, we're gonna be doing a workshop with the key stakeholders just to review some options that are architect-prepared, options, renderings, and different details. We're hoping to sit down with them the next couple of weeks to do that. We'd like to finalize the scope of the project by early October, so kind of a timeline that's pretty soon. Once we get that idea finalized, by the end of October, we'd like to have that final report done. You know, what we think it's gonna look like, what we estimate it's gonna look like in terms of the project. And then, you know, they'll be sent to estimators in terms of cost. That should take two to three weeks to get that kind of estimate, what we think the project is actually gonna cost. And then, you know, throughout the process of the budget, we'll review the presentation of the renderings and the idea for the library, and it would be on the ballot, obviously pending the approval--[1582.33]